Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is October 10th. And we would like, Mark, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. All right, how about roll call?
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trass.
I'm here. Moving on down to item number four, Correspondents' and Organizational Business. Do we have any correspondents to report?
Fish and Wildlife Service announced a proposal to list the Northwestern Pond Turtle and Southwestern Pond Turtle as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. National Park Service and Fish and Wildlife shared an environmental impact statement evaluating options for restoring grizzly bears. And Monty Ritter submitted a letter to the Federal Emergency Management Agency regarding the Vance Creek Trestle Preservation Society.
Thank you very much. So moving on to item 4.2, this is a Planning Advisory Commission vacancy news release. Mark, could you read that?
I can, as soon as I get you.
Nothing like putting you on the spot.
No, that's fine. Happy to. So this is a Planning Advisory Commission vacancy. Mason County is seeking a motivated and engaged individual to serve as a volunteer member of the Planning Advisory Commission. The commission will play a crucial role this year and next in updating the county's comprehensive plan, which outlines the vision and goals for the county's future growth and development. There is one open seat represented as either Commissioner District Two or Three, which is Sheldon, Arcadia, Bayshore, Union, Hoodsport, Matlock, Lillywhop, or Camilche area. The Planning Advisory Commission is a seven-member citizen board appointed to advise the Board of County Commissioners on policies related to amendments to the comprehensive plan, shoreline master program, resource ordinance, and other development regulations, including making recommendations on rezone applications. The commission typically meets at least once per month, on the third Monday at 6:00 PM, with special meetings scheduled as necessary. Appointed commissioners normally serve a four-year term. The Commission District Two-Three position will be filling a vacancy set to expire in January of 2024, and therefore, we are setting the new expiration to January of 2028. Applications to serve on the board are being accepted until the position is filled and should be submitted to the Mason County Commissioners at 411 North Fifth Street, Sheldon, Washington, 98584. Application forms will be obtained from the Commissioner's office, phone number, area code 3604279670, extension 419, or visit our website at www.masoncountylaw.gov.
Perfect, thank you. All right, let's move on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for citizen input. We have a 15-minute time limit, three minutes per person. We ask that when you come to addresses, you come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and then begin, uh, begin talking to us. And do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and talk?
Hey Larry, I'll set your three minutes.
Do I get three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
We have a gong.
Until you say good morning.
That's really good. And actually, believe it or not, Mark, I kept it kind of short today because I didn't know if I had three minutes or five minutes. So first of all, good morning, Mason County Commissioners. My name is Larry Viggitt, and I am the Union Business Representative for the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers. I represent the fine men and women that work at our county corrections and support staff. Our corrections and support staff play a critical role in ensuring safety, security of our communities by overseeing the incarcerated population and maintaining order within the corrections facility. However, it has more than once come to my attention that these officers and support staff are facing severe staffing shortages and are being compensated inadequately for the critical and crucial work they perform. The understaffing issues in the county corrections facility has reached a critical level, posing serious risk to both the safety of the officers and the inmates under their care. The excessive workload, overtime, and burnout that results from understaffing not only jeopardizes the well-being of our officers but also compromises the security of the facility. This situation demands your immediate attention. Furthermore, the compensation received by our corrections officers does not reflect the demand of the high-stress nature of their jobs. These dedicated individuals are underpaid compared to their counterparts in neighboring counties and even other sectors of law enforcement. This wage disparity does not only demoralize the corrections officers, but it also makes it challenging to attract and retain qualified individuals in this profession. I respectfully urge the county commissioners to take the following actions to address these concerns. One, increase staffing levels. Allocate additional resources to hire and train more corrections officers to alleviate the current staffing shortage. Ensuring the safe and manageable work environment is essential to the well-being of both our officers and our inmates. Two, fair compensation. Review and adjust the compensation package for our corrections officers to make them comparable with other counties. Adequate pay is crucial to attract and retain qualified personnel. Three, continue to invest in the training and support. Provide ongoing training and support programs to equip our corrections officers with the necessary skills and tools to perform their duties effectively. Listen to the officers, engage in open and regular dialogue with corrections officers, and understand their concerns and challenges. Our county's corrections officers are the backbone to our justice system, and their dedication to the public's safety should be recognized and rewarded appropriately. It is imperative that we take immediate action to address these issues of understaffing and underpayment, not only to improve the working conditions for our corrections officers but also to ensure the safety of our community. I am confident that by working together, we can find a viable solution to these challenges to ensure our corrections officers receive the support and compensation rightfully deserved. Thank you very much. I bring that to you because it came to my attention that not only are we understaffed, but that there's a lot of them that want to walk away because they're so burnt out. And we're hoping that together, we can work together to come up with a solution to keep that from happening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I can under the three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I think you'll be interested to see what we have on our action agenda as well. Anyone else? Anyone else like to, in the room, address the commission? All right, anyone in Zoom? Do you see anyone?
Is there anyone on Zoom?
I know, we don't have the other app.
It would look different yesterday. I think it updated, and so it changed the screen view.
Well, no, you have the view just on us. We need to have.
We usually have it like that. There's 14.
I think it's on the top corner. The view, yep.
It's on gallery.
It's on gallery. How weird.
What the heck?
We'll just ask.
Oh, that make a difference. There you go. Good job. That's why we pay you the big bucks. Want to be a corrections officer? We need you.
All right, anyone in Zoom land? All right, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move on to item number six, the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of today's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the August 28, 2023 briefing minutes and the August 29, 2023 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the August 28, 2023 briefing minutes and the August 29, 2023 regular minutes as presented. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number eight. This is our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Items can be pulled for separate discussion or vote. Commissioner Schutte, if you could take items 8.1 through 8.8. I'm going to change it up a bit. I'm going to take 8.9 through 8.13. Commissioner Netherland, if you could take 8.14 through 8.20.
Screw us all up. Keep me on the toes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 8.1, approval of warrants and treasurer electronic remittances. Claims clearing fund warrant numbers 8099648 through 8099916 in the amount of $1,846,911.83. Direct deposit fund warrant number 100054 through 100475 in the amount of $901,333.86. Salary clearing fund warrant numbers 7007635 through 7007660 in the amount of $594,277.85. And treasurer electronic remittance in the amount of $177,816.56. Item 8.2, approval of the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan and the 2023-2025 CJTA Funded Treatment and Recovery Support Services Contract in the amount of $182,950. Item 8.3, approval of the contract with Wendy Wong, RPH, to provide oversight and education as the hepatitis C pharmaceutical provider for Mason County Public Health. Item 8.4, approval of the Healthcare Authority Contract Number K7135 for Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program Expansion Services and subcontract with Olympic Health and Recovery Services in the amount of $935,000. Approval of the WIC Women, Infants, and Children Program Coordinator, Certified Job Classification, and to post the position. Item 8.6, approval of the Mason Conservation District and Mason County Environmental Health Contract for National Estuary Program Funds in the amount of $57,480 to implement education and outreach campaigns related to property maintenance and water quality. Item 8.7, approval of the resolution setting a hearing date with the hearings examiner for Wednesday, November 8, 2023, at 1:00 PM via Zoom to consider public comment on road vacation number 415. And item 8.8, approval to adopt the Emergency Support Function 17, Mason County Cyber Security Group, MCCSG. That's it. More after that, but that's all.
Item 8.9, approval of lead pay for the following. Todd Cannon, Information Services. Carl Bed Olson, Parks and Trails. Mariah Frazier, Community Development. Jeanne McFarland, Community Development. Josh Look, Community Development. Todd Cunningham, Community Development. And Scott Rudy, Community Development, from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. And Julie Lewis, Community Development, from September 1, 2023 through December 31, 2024. Item 8.10, approval for the 2024 Take Home Vehicle Request for Kaylee Frazier, Roy Byerly, Jeremy Seymour, Grant Duchan, John Ronald, Roy Leroux, and Pete Metcalf. Item 8.11, approval of the Niskali Jail Service Agreement to House Inmates for Mason County in the Niskali Detention and Correction Center for the rate of $130 per inmate per day. Item 8.12, approval of the two-year 2023-2025 jail peer support program contract with Olympic Health and Recovery Services for a total of $76,000 from the non-county-operated Treatment Sales Tax Fund. Item 8.13, approval to close a portion of Elphindal Pass Road with approximately, or from approximately mile post, I did it again, 0.00 to mile post 1.85, on Sunday, October 22, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the filming of a car commercial.
Item number 8.14 reads, "Approval for Public Works to Advertise, Set Bid Opening Dates and Times Award Contracts and to Allow the Chair to Sign All Pertinent Documents for the Call for Bids for Routine Paint, Line, Asphalt Emulsion, and Manufacturing Stockpiling of Chip Seal Aggregate for 2024." Item number 8.15, approval of the resolution establishing the 2024 field rental rates for the Mason County Parks and Trails Department and approval of the revised Field Use Agreement. Item number 8.16, approval to participate in the Washington County's Risk Pool, WCRP, Optional 5 Million Excess of $20 Million Policy. Item number 8.17, approval to reclassify Michelle Crowe and Shannon McGregor from Financial Analysts to Senior Financial Analysts. Item number 8.18, approval for the coroner to purchase a body lift, storage rack, storage boards, all from Sutherland Medical LLC, for an estimated cost of $10,640.64. Item number 8.19, approval for the chair to sign the Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Grant Award Agreement for the award of $890,675, beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2026. Item number 8.20, approval of the following Mason County Officers, Employees, Volunteers' Request for Defense and Indemnification Coverage, assigned by the county as named defendants in the case of Zachary Boyce, number 318535. Case number 323CV05809JHCGL, United States District Court, and served upon them on October 3, 2023 via USPS to Kevin Hanson, Shane Schoenberg, and Randy Newell.
Great, thank you. Having read through the action agenda, are there any items you would like to be removed for separate discussion or vote?
For me? No.
All right, anyone in the audience like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? Anyone in Zoom land? All right, seeing and hearing none. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda items numbered 8.1 through 8.20 as read.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda items 8.1 through 8.20 as read. Any discussion?
Not for me.
No? No? Did you see those?
I haven't picked up your piece of paper yet. I need to pick that up.
If we're going to bring it up, we need to make notice that that is to help alleviate some of the pressure we are allowing for and paying for other inmates to go to another facility to lower that threshold. But understand, we heard you. We do know, and we actually know, and it's something we are, it's on the front of our mind all the time here. And I'm not just saying it as words. We understand.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so please, please, please tell our folks that we care and we're really working on trying to find resolutions to issues.
I guess I'll just, oh, you want to go ahead, Mark? Okay. I'll just also add, last week, we had an opportunity to meet with our legislators as well. Last session, our legislative delegation secured a million dollars in funding for us to evaluate a new jail. And one of the messages that we wanted to send to them was, a new facility is great. We're definitely interested in working on that, but we also need their support in helping with correction staffing. A facility is only as good, is only as secure as the staffing that we're able to provide for it. And that was another message that we wanted them to take back to Olympia with them because this is a statewide issue. This isn't just, you know, for people who are maybe just tuning into this or are new to county government, this isn't a Mason County problem. It's a problem Mason County has to address, for sure, but it's a statewide staffing crisis on the county corrections side. And so we hope that our legislators are going to take that message back to Olympia as they get into session next January, continue to work with us. And today, we took it, we're taking action on an outsourcing contract. That's a, that's a pressure valve type situation for us. We hope that, we hope that not only your membership but also administrative staff at the sheriff's office continues to work with you and us on solutions. And, you know, frankly, this isn't a problem that the commission is going to be able to solve on its own. We know that we need to work with the membership as well as administrative staff at the sheriff's office in order to get things turned around. And so I don't see anybody here from sheriff's administration. Shane, I guess Lieutenant Schoenberg's on Zoom, but, you know, they need to engage in this with us as well, and we're more than welcome to have that, you know, that conversation. And of course, too, you know, use the mechanisms in your contract, work with HR. You know, we have an HR department for a reason, and so you don't have to feel like you have to come to our commission meeting and have these conversations. There's, there are alternatives that, you know, hopefully, you know, can help resolve some of the issues in perhaps a different timeframe than having to wait to come to one of our business meetings. But appreciate you taking the time to be with us there.
I appreciate you guys addressing that. Thank you. And I know that this is part of the process to get there. I also know that you guys are one of the cogs in this huge wheel of lack of people to come to work at this present time. And being in a situation where 15 minutes down the road, you can go make more money. So we understand that, but with that, we're just here to try to hopefully help.
I understand Thurston is down to 30 now. And then on top of that, though, just so the public knows, we, as a commission, have been talking about finally going out and hiring a headhunter to specifically try and fill these positions and do something very proactive to try and make it happen.
So by and large, we try to avoid getting involved in the operational side of functions in the jail. It's, you know, it's, we trust that the functions of the jail are being met, you know, outside of the facility's needs, which falls under our purview. We trust that the operational side is, you know, is being dealt with, you know, by the sheriff's office. And so, you know, we do have an opportunity to do some new things, like Commissioner Netherland mentioned, we're open to those options, hopefully having a, you know, being able to get people to take advantage of the signing bonus that we've had out there and, you know, drumming up support through different things like that. But, you know, I've said this a couple of times, I mean, the reality is, yeah, you can go down the road and make, you know, a little bit more money at Thurston County, but they have a significant staffing crisis as well. And I think there's a systemic issue that we're not talking about in corrections and in, you know, and sort of the societal pressures that are put on law enforcement that we also need to be having as part of this conversation. And we need to be able to tell prospective employees that it's a difficult job, there are stresses that come with that job, but there are also really inherent benefits to public service. The public service, especially in law enforcement, especially in corrections, can be and is a worthwhile profession in that you're valued for the work that you do. And, you know, those are messages that we need to probably share a little bit louder and clearer even from our positions. And so, you know, this is, this is the first conversation we've had directly with you, Larry, and I hope, and I hope it's not the last that we have with you and your members and that we can continue to figure this out.
And just so you know, the sheriff himself, and we can't, we don't, we can't detest when he's.
No, you're fine.
The sheriff himself is the one that contacted me to let me know. He wanted to be here, but he is already scheduled in Eastern Washington. And so he, but he did want to be here, and that's why he, at least a half an hour conversation to try and make sure that we can look at any options. So I wanted you to know, he did care, and he just is.
And I did, I reached out to the undersheriff and the sheriff yesterday as soon as I found out what was going on, because I'm not here to blindside you guys in anything. We're here to work together, ultimately in the end, give my members the best possible solutions to stay here, so.
Right, right. We want them to stay.
Absolutely.
Please let them know that we're working on this, Mark.
Yeah, I just would like to add that some of the current things that are going on right now, so our HR department is going out to different recruiting events. Having an individual in uniform would be really nice.
Absolutely.
So if we could get somebody that would volunteer to come with them and to help drum up business or interest in becoming a corrections officer and be able to answer specific questions at those events, would love to see that. So I know that our HR department has purchased 150-yard signs that we're going to be placing throughout the community, and if correctional officers would like to have some of those to place in their yards, then would love to provide those to you. You can, you know, we have signs that we're pushing out there. There's a lot of, it's not just corrections that we're low in recruitment on, but that definitely is at the forefront of our minds, and HR is working hard to do that. Would love to have some participation and help from the law enforcement side.
Yeah, they were at Oyster Fest this weekend.
Yep. And, you know, it's not just building and adding to what's there, but not, we cannot forget the people that have sacrificed over and over and over to stay there. And we have one member, I just found out the other day, turned down his going and getting medical work because he believes so passionately in that core values that they've set upon themselves. And those are the things that need to be rewarded back to these people and making sure that we're taking care of them.
And Larry, if you don't mind, I'd love if you stay around after me. I've never been able to shake your hand and introduce myself, and I'd like to say hi to you and.
Absolutely, I will be here. I'm not running away, so.
All right.
If I could just, on a real quick positive note too, Larry, I just want to say thanks. I might not have the chance to talk to you after the meeting, but you were just super responsive on a support letter for Recompute, and definitely appreciate having, having that engagement with you and you having the county's back to see growth countywide. So I appreciate you and your member support on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote.
Are we still there?
We are still there. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, let's move on to item number nine. This is the time we set aside for department heads or elected officials to address the commission if they'd like to. Please state your name and who you're with.
Your humble auditor. Hey, a couple months ago, I briefed you guys on our intent to apply for a second round of grant funding from the Secretary of State's Office for Information Security, and they approved almost everything on that list. Got a formal notification on Friday, so we're going to move ahead with what they've approved. Just wanted you guys to be aware.
Thank you.
All right, that's great. That's great. Thanks, Steve, I mean, auditor. Anyone else in the room? All right, anyone in the Zoom room? All right, going, going, chance gone. Moving on to item number 10, public hearings. We have no public hearings set for this morning. Moving on to item number 11, board calendars and reports. Commissioner Netherland, if you'd go first, Commissioner Schutte, and I'll follow.
Be honored. Madam Chair, I, this last week, we all enjoyed meeting with our employees who have been here 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years, and we've given them a certificate of appreciation for their services. Again, it's just wonderful, and although I tease anybody that's been here for 30 years to be a little bit crazy, the truth of the matter is, it is quite an honor that they would stay with us long enough to serve the community and the rest of us as long as they did. And I think it's Commissioner Trass that makes it clear each time that nothing gets done without them. So that is such an accurate statement, nobody could say it better. Rotary Meetings, The Hub, I informed you that we were going to have a fundraiser at The Hub to raise money for the senior center to pay down their debt. It was more than successful. We were well overwhelmed. We had to turn people away to the point to where we were just straight, not prepared. But all together with donations and everything, they paid off 14% of their debt in one event. It was a lot more than we ever could have dreamed of. I'll volunteer, my family will volunteer to do it again after we overcome the wounds from this last one. It was just more than we could have ever handled, but everybody that stepped up to help did a great job. I also had a meeting with Dan Griffey and Travis Couture and the sheriff and some citizens to talk about some of the issues that are going on with law enforcement and some of our local law enforcement issues and how to deal with some of the problems that we face here in our community. And I just want to thank Representative Griffey and Couture and the sheriff himself for all coming out there individually to make sure that they met him eye to eye. Jeff of Local Rin. Jeff of Local Wrench had an open house up there, the left board meeting. We had several budget meetings, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization Executive Board Meeting. We all attended the fraud exit from the state auditor, and then we all had another meeting, which was incredible, meeting with the representatives. Again, the best meeting I think I've ever attended at the county level with our state representatives, where I think they heard us better than I've ever, I've ever seen. And it was, they took the time to understand our, our waste facility units and some of our other issues as was brought up by the commission, and, and I wanted to say thank you for that. Coming up the next weeks, I have another ORCA meeting, then I have a Rotary meeting, Mason Transit Authority meeting, Mason County Housing Authority meeting, P R, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization Executive Board Meeting, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority Finance Committee meeting, a meeting with folks from Razor Road. And I'm drafted again for life because we, at this, at the county level, we were able to get funding for the ballfields, the football fields stadium in, in North Mason. And part of it is that I have to serve on a facilities committee till the day I die. And that's, just came back up again, so I will be attending one of those meetings again too, except for now, they're talking about having those meetings on a regular basis. So my one volunteer thing with them is, looks like it turned into maybe at least a monthly or even bimonthly, or no. Say it right. Twice a month, yeah. Thank you. But now, that brings us back, and we start this process all over again.
Good. Yeah, just as Commissioner Netherland mentioned, really productive meeting with our legislators regarding the, the jail and all the issues surrounding that and mental health, as well as having an opportunity to talk about our legislative priorities for twenty twenty-four. Here, just in a couple of months, they're going to be back in session, and so we want to set them up to succeed for Mason County and, and get our priorities in front of them. And so appreciated them taking time out of their Friday afternoon to meet with us Friday at Oyster Fest. So it was, it was a productive meeting. Also, had the opportunity to help out at Oyster Fest over the weekend, just to, just, you know, I mean, just packed. It was great to see so many people there, out, out celebrating and enjoying everything that Mason County has to offer, all for a good cause, too. So that's, that's really good. Moving forward, have MaceCom board meeting this afternoon, later on this week, I T Steering Committee, as well as a check-in with the Army Corps of Engineers on our Skokomish Valley projects, have our briefings, and then back for a Y M C Advisory Board Meeting, Mason Transit, a MaceCom Supervisor Meeting, and then the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum on the seventeenth. Also have a Hiring and Recruitment Committee Meeting for Hood Canal Coordinating Council, ahead of the Hood Canal Coordinating Council Board Meeting. Have Thurston Mason B H A S O Governing Board Meeting, and then I have a all-day Strategic Plan Meeting with the Hood Canal Coordinating Council on the twentieth before coming back for briefings with my bi-weekly check-in with B H A S O staff and our commission meeting on the twenty-fourth.
All right. Great. So later today, I have, well, I do want to comment, Oyster Fest was awesome this year. The weather was perfect. People were happy. They weren't wet, too, which helped them being happy. And plus all the, the good food and, and wine and drink, and it was great.
Camping.
Right? Oh, my gosh. So many people camping. It was cool. So let's see, we've got, or today, I've got the E D, an E D C legislative meeting, Turning Point Meetings, tomorrow's local emergency planning meeting, Mason Transit Budget Meeting. There's a Business After Hours at El Serapi, so I might be there. Then I've got an E D C meeting early on Thursday, WASAC Federal Issues Committee Meeting, Public Works Board Executive Meeting, Public Works Board Traditional Meeting, and then we're here for our briefings, WASAC Virtual Assembly, starting to plan for Christmas parties for the Republican Women's. Community Action Council Meeting with Commerce, Mason Transit Meeting, Lodging Tax Meeting, and then Public Works Board. Again, Chamber Luncheon also is on the nineteenth, and that will be at Public Works. So if you're in the area, come on. Ribbon Cutting for Olympic Title and Escrow for their new location. And then we're back here for our briefings, WASAC Virtual Assembly, and I believe we're having budget negotiations possibly that afternoon. And then there's also a Mason County G O P meeting, and then we're back for our commission meeting. And that's also the day people need to pay taxes. How's that for a reminder? All right.
Isn't it the thirty-first for taxes?
I thought, well, I've got it on my calendar that for the twenty-fourth, probably to remind me to get them there.
Okay. I was going to say, I'm going to hold on to your money for another week if that interests.
Get that small amount of interest. All right.
If I can, Madam Chair, I know it's not politically correct right now, but I gotta, I'd like to ask that we take a moment and give a moment of silence for everything that's happening right now over in Israel and the Gaza Strip. The things that are happening are horrific. We all think that we're safe in our homes, and we all feel like nothing could ever touch us, and then you realize that anything and anybody can be touched at some time. And I'd like to ask, you know, and yes, I'm asking for everybody for Israel, but all those also on the Gaza Strip, because you got to remember, not all of them are Hamas terrorists, and they are trying, they didn't want Hamas to do what they did either, but they're in the middle of it, whether they like it or not. That's the way the world works. And so I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in support of life and in support of the idea that somehow we can all eventually get back to getting along before it gets worse.
Okay. All right. We, we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move adjourned.
I'll second.
We're adjourned.